We're going to start our meeting with a presentation. Councilmember Reed.
Yes. So if I could ask Wayne and Dick with the Mount Aerie Main Street Association to join me, as well as Sue with the Mount Aerie Net, and Dave with the Links of Shaladon, or Links at Shaladon. Yep. So Thanksgiving morning, the Mount Aerie Main Street Association, in partnership with the Links at Shaladon, hosted the Third Annual Turkey Trot. One hundred percent of the proceeds from this event benefit the Mount Aerie Net, which is a local food bank located on Main Street. Sue, on behalf of the Mount Aerie Main Street Association and the Links at Shaladon, we'd like to thank you for everything that your organization does. They provide services for families in need, whether it's, excuse me, I'm sort of, I just jumped in here. Whether it's services that families need for, you know, if they come upon hardship, loss of job, loss of house due to disaster, the Mount Aerie Net is always there to help them. So we are here to present a check to Sue and the folks at the Mount Aerie Net, and it is a little bit larger than last year, which is exciting. So $6,484.91. So again, Sue, thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Dave, did you want to say anything?
No, thanks for everything you did. You did a great job. Look forward to a long relationship.
Yeah, it was a fantastic event.
This is what community is about.
Yeah.
Yes.
So obviously, this event is put on by a group of volunteers. A lot of people give up their time on Thanksgiving morning to come out and, you know, make this event as successful as it's been, and we appreciate them as much as we appreciate the Mount Aerie Net. So thank you.
It'll be 7,000.
And I hope warmer.
All right. Nicely done. I don't see any county or state representatives out there, so we'll move on through that. Next on the agenda is the approval of the council meeting minutes and closed minutes for December 2019, both open and closed meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve those?
I'll make a motion to approve both.
Is there a second? All right. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, and those are approved. Next, we have the Mount Aerie Police Chief Reitz Monthly Report.
Good evening, everyone. Corporal Brooks filling in for Chief Reitz for the Mount Aerie Police Monthly Report for the month of December. Total calls for service for the month were 777. Of those calls for service, there were 15 Part I offenses, nine of which were shoplifting, one of which was the aggravated assault, which would have been the Prospect Road incident. There were 17 Part II offenses. There were 83 investigative reports written. For traffic enforcement, there were 65 traffic stops for the month, 40 citations issued, 43 traffic warnings issued, 15 safety equipment repair orders issued, no DOI arrests and no traffic arrests. For criminal enforcement, there were eight criminal arrests, no criminal citations and no civil citations.
Incident summary for December, and I think we all have a copy of that, unless somebody wants to further discuss it, we'll just consider that a suitable report for us. Everybody okay with that? Okay. All right, moving on. Next is community concerns, citizen comments. Is there anyone out there who would like to address us during public comments? If you do, hold your hand up, so I can see how many are out there. One, two, three. Okay. All right, if you could keep it to under about three minutes, that'd be great, and feel free to come up one at a time. Thanks.
Phil Botts, Planning Commission, but I'm here tonight as a resident, 103 East Church Street. And I think the council is probably aware of when we have police reports and other reports, but I think for the benefit of the audience and residents, if there could be some commentary on what are the trends that that data feeds into, you know, what's staying the same, what's increasing, what's diminishing, you know, what's your commentary on that? If it is a concern, you know, how you're addressing it. When you just give us data, we don't have a context for that. And I think it's so darn important, especially with the establishment, little over a year now of the local police force, to understand what that data represents and the significance of it, and what are the trends? Okay? And maybe even speak to, relative to a community our size and other, you know, attributes of our particular situation, what's the significance of that? What does it mean? Okay? Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Trends. I made a note of it, so.
Yeah, I'm saying it.
Okay.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lauren Belsky. I am the owner of Center Stage Performing Arts Academy on 2904 Backacre Circle, and I am here tonight just to address the parking situation on Backacre Circle. So the building my business is in faces Backacre Circle, and we have parking lot on the side and the rear of our building, and directly across from the front of our building is the Twin Arch Townhome Community. When I moved into the location three years ago, parking was allowed on both sides of Backacre Circle. The road was designed wide enough to allow for parking on both sides while still having enough room for traffic each way. Our patrons would either utilize our parking lot or the on-street parking on Backacre Circle. The parents of our older children would use the curb at Backacre Circle to drop off their children because there's a clear line of sight to our front door there, so it provides a sense of security for them. Last December, there were a few residents from the Townhome Community that complained of traffic and parking concerns, and we take the safety of our community as our top priority, so we took these concerns really seriously and worked with the town on these concerns. The first major complaint was that there were cars making U-turns on the street because Backacre is not a through road. To solve this issue, the town put up no U-turn signs, which makes complete sense, so that way cars aren't making dangerous U-turns in the road. The second complaint was that when cars were parked on both sides of Backacre Circle and someone was opening a door to a car, that it wouldn't leave enough room for oncoming traffic to pass both directions. So there were no parking signs installed on the Townhome side of Backacre Circle, so that there was only parking allowed on one side of the street now to create some more space for two flow of directions as well as parking still, which seemed, again, smart to me, made more room, still allowed for our business to utilize the drop-offs and the on-street parking, but creating a safer space. After these changes were made, the police did a patrol of the area for a month, and they reported at the next Streets and Roads Commission meeting that there were 19 traffic stops in the area that month, and of 17 of them were unrelated to anything in front of our business, meaning to me that it seemed that the safety issue had been pretty much resolved. After these, or a few months ago, the complaints surfaced again from the community. These complaints were made mostly on the community Facebook page from the Townhome Associations. The complaints seemed to focus around photos of cars parked along our side of Backacre Circle where parking was legally allowed, so it was nothing illegal happening in photos that the complaints were based off of. I attended the November Streets and Roads meeting, as well as all the meetings this past month, to make sure that we were aware of everything, and no members from the Townhome Community attended this meeting. The chief of police spoke that he had spent a few hours on Backacre Circle and noticed no real safety concerns of the area at this time. It was said at the meeting that there would be no changes to the on-street parking, and that we would reevaluate at the January Streets and Roads Commission's meeting, which is happening tomorrow night. A week and a half later, I was notified by the mayor that we'd be installing no parking signs on our side of Backacre Circle, now not allowing any parking on this very wide, almost 40-foot wide road. As it is now, the parking is not allowed on either side, and I'm asking that this decision to be reviewed. Several ideas were presented to optimize the safety of the road. The simplest and most economical solution would be to move the center line over so that there's a width, two lanes wide on our side of the street, one for parking and one for through traffic, as well as still space on the opposite side of the road. And I know this idea was brought up initially by a council member who I thought, you know, it seemed like a really easy solution to us. It's coming across to me as anti-business that it seems that a few of these really emotionally charged Facebook posts are being appeased, and the police documents and our concerns are not being taken into consideration. It doesn't seem right that these changes are being made just due to these Facebook posts while our customers and business colleagues are following documented avenues of communication. So I'd like for this to be something that's reconsidered.
Thank you, Lauren.
All right, thank you.
Happy New Year. I'm Frank Dertzfall, owner of the mixed-use building that Lauren's in on 2904 Backacre Circle. I have been involved in this process, as she has described from the beginning, and we have made efforts in the areas that we have parking to try to accommodate the use more as best we can with there, although we have limited parking and not unlimited parking. So anyway, it has improved, as was recommended to us by the town staff and the mayor, so we took pains to take care of those things. But I, as well, have, you know, looked into this and talked to other business people there on Backacre Circle over the course of all this time, and I'm here tonight specifically to share some of those concerns that they share with me and speak on their behalf as well, in an effort to try to save some time. In the gist of it being that back in the early 2000s, when the town believed in new growth, the Planning and Zoning Commission laid out many new streets for various subdivisions per the town's specifications and required the developers to install and pay for these new streets. Once completed, they were approved by the town for the specified use. For most part, these streets were designed and built to have two travel lanes and two parking lanes, with the width of the street to vary from 34 feet to 40 feet, depending on development density. That's very apparent in the ordinance 2002-19. Once the streets were paved, the town put a center line down the middle and basically created two extremely wide travel lanes and no parking lanes. As public-use streets in an urban community, the developer and the taxpayers are not getting what they paid taxes for, nor is the town following the planning and zoning specifications for the street use. Part of the reason for their specifications for design is based on traffic control and safety, which, as far as I'm concerned, the town ignores by creating two overly wide super-slab lanes that promote speed and recklessness. At this time, the streets appear to be controlled by the present mayor and town engineer at their personal discretion. This means that they can arbitrarily change or limit use of the street based on a personal bias or a judgment call that is not necessarily in the best entrance of the public use, but instead saves them some personal hassle. Because the town didn't implement the street specifications, they required other developer, and there is no street use code standard followed by anyone, any mayor or any town official that comes along at any time can change the use of a public street anytime they want for any reason they have based on their personal bias. To me, this is not how a democratic legislative body elected by its taxpayers should be operating its public streets. Backacre Circle is a 36-foot-wide street that should have two 10-foot travel lanes and two 8-foot public parking lanes per town design specifications. This is a national standard that meets public safety and travel requirements. This is a requirement that is not met by the downtown Main Street area, and that street has a far higher traffic volume than most any other street in the town. So there should be no issue on Backacre Circle which meets national standards. But the town created issues on the street by not implementing the use they standardized, and it is to the detriment of the business community and taxpayers' public use and safety. The town has an old history of not being business-friendly. Therefore, my question to you is, will you, the town council, address the street ambiguity issue to help your taxpaying business owners on Backacres Circle? Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
All right, thank you, Frank. Any other public comments? Okay, we're, it was close. It was close. We almost went.
Good evening, John Hall. I live on Chessy Court, which is in the Twin Arch Crossing community. I'm here in support of the Center Stage Dance Studio. My daughter goes there. I live in the community. I see all the Facebook posts. I think they're unfair. I think it's a handful of folks that are dictating the way that this is going, and I've never had an issue parking, driving on Backacre Circle. I have more issues in front of the gym, and I know it's been said that there's no issues in front of the gym than in front of the dance studio. So I just wanted to show my support, and please reconsider. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have anything?
I'm Mike Dixon. I'm an owner of a business on Backacre Circle, and I'm here in support of Frank and the dance studio. The parking rules have changed a couple different times since I've been there that I've seen, and it hasn't been all because of them. It's been we've had trucks, tractor-trailers, dump trucks and stuff parked on those streets. So, you know, to try to curb some of that, that needs to be done, and I understand that. One of my big concerns right now, and I'm not here to beat a dead horse, but we got a 72-unit subdivision going in across from the Goddard School. And we have a lot of people that come in there early in the morning with their kids to the Goddard School, and I think there's a lot to think about here with the parking situation on Backacre Circle and the uniqueness of what we have there. We have a industrial pie with the icing or the outside of that pie being residential, and everybody's not going to get along. I mean, there's going to be times when tractor-trailer's going to come in there, and they're going to piss the residential people off. There's going to be times when we're going to have soccer games on them fields over there, and they put shitty diapers and candy wrappers in my bushes, and I'm going to be pissed off. But I think the fact of the matter is, we all need to figure out, number one, what is the rules for the parking on Backacre Circle for everybody? Not just Frank and his group, not just the residential people, and not just the industrial and commercial people that are in the center of this pie. We need to figure out what they are for everybody, come up with a good solution that appeases everybody, whatever that may be, move the line over. I don't know what it is, but I do know that everybody's getting bent out of shape, and I don't think there's any real reason that we can't get a almost 40-foot-wide road to where it pleases everybody. And I'm in support of the girls. I mean, they like to drop their kids off and see them walk in the door as opposed to parking around back and not seeing the little girls walk in or boys or whatever's going there. I mean, we gotta, you know, these are kids trying to learn something also, so we have to, I just want to say, I'd like to get the ruling straightened out and get it on paper and be done with it.
Could I ask your name again?
It's Mike Dixon.
Mike Dixon. Okay, thank you very much.
I normally would not comment. I will make an exception this evening, specifically as far as being business-friendly. We work for well over a year. We tried over a dozen different things to try to make this work. While we appreciate the businesses and what they bring and value them, I think we showed that in the last year where we took, I mean, way beyond the steps that we probably should have even tried to take to work with the businesses. But at some point, we need to remember, there are residents that live there, and I realize there's some trouble on both sides. These people pay hundreds of thousands of dollars for their homes. They also have rights. Let's try to remember them as well. Thank you. Oh, and one more thing. As far as setting standards, Mike, throughout the town, you're allowed to park on the street unless it's designated where you're not. There's examples throughout town such as Lookout. For fire safety reasons, we only allow parking on one side. We actually do the best we can. When we build, we don't designate no parking parking. We take it as it goes. When it becomes a safety issue, that's when we step in. This became a safety issue. Thank you.
All right. Okay, thank you. We're going to move on with the meeting now. We're down to ordinances and resolutions, starting with Resolution 2019-10 to extend Center Street. This is for reintroduction and adoption, and I'll look down the lane here at Pam and ask Councilmember Reed, which one of these would you like to introduce, if you do want to introduce one? The one that's modified with some language from December or the original one?
So Tom, where is the additional language that you added?
Sue, in the very last.
And could you pull your microphone down? Thanks.
In the very last paragraph, this is a suggestion by Council President Hushar, where it says, this is sixth day of January 2020, that if not constructed through normal development processes by January 1, 2023, the town council should seek acquisition of the property and budget for the construction/completion of Center Street. The original just said, if Center Street isn't extended by a blank date, then it should be extended, basically, paraphrasing. So this incorporates Councilmember Hushar's suggestion.
So I would agree with the addition.
Okay, so are you going to introduce 2019-10 as we discussed in December, I believe, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And is there a second on that?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, Jason, seconds? Okay, and we're into discussion. Anybody like to make a comment? Carl, what do you got?
I liked that the dates and everything were added, the additional language from December. Just a question, is it, would there be any concern if we changed the date to like June 30th, 2023, or somewhere around that?
So this.
Or it's just, or the end of the 2023, like December, just to give us more, give us more time to?
So this actually gives us more time than what David had originally suggested. He suggested two years and 2022. I added a full year to that.
Okay, but we're beginning, it's really just two years because we're beginning January 1st, 2023.
So we have 2020, 2021, and 2022.
Gotcha.
Three full years.
I'm going by dates instead of actual time. No problem. Cool. Thank you.
Patty, have you got anything?
Well, as you know, at the previous meeting when this was first sent to us for review, I had some concerns, and I still do. I agree that at some point, Center Street should be extended, but there is a lot of cost involved in that. We don't know if we can even acquire the land. We don't know what that land is going to entail. And as much as I want to be proactive, and I don't want to, as we say, kick this down the can, I have to be fiscally responsible as an elected official. And I don't, I don't want to put us on the hook. I know that legally, this is just a resolution, and it's not something that's in stone, but I just, my, you know, my inner voice is telling me that we're working diligently with the town staff to try to make things happen. We're trying to hopefully work with the state to see if there's possibly some financial help that could come from that standpoint. We don't know what's going to happen if a developer comes in. Will that developer pay for everything? So for me, I'd like to sort of put it on hold at this point. I think it's a, it's a good idea, but I'm just not sure if we have all the pieces to the puzzle and play shot to, to put a date that if this doesn't happen by this date by, you know, then we need to acquire the land. I'm a little happier that it says "should" instead of "shall," but I'm still not 100% comfortable with it.
Good. All right.
I'll go ahead and make a.
So again, the resolution does not hold, it is not forcing the town to pay for the road to go through. It simply meant for us to be held accountable to get it, or to be working towards getting it through and setting milestones. So basically, everything that you just said, Patty, is what we will be working on over the next three years, answering those questions. Again, and I've said it before, it makes it a tangible item instead of something we just talk about.
Jason, did you have anything to add?
I was going to let you go next.
Okay, all right. I think that, I understand what you're saying, Patty, and the, one of the things that's little alarms that's going off in my head is that, you know, I'm up for reelection well before this date comes around, and I hate putting something on the table that potentially I'm not even going to be around for, you know? The other thing that kind of rubs me about it is the, it's kind of like talking about, you know, when for 20 years, we had rails of trails on the agenda, and all we did was had it on a piece of paper, and it wasn't until we got out there and put the shovel in the ground that things happened. So my concern is that we're signing a piece of paper that, you know, that, you know, that really isn't putting the shovel in the ground, and the shovel in the ground, to me, is getting MXD zoning through. It's talking to our state delegate to make sure that we can try to get some funding out of the state, and it's making sure that we budget accordingly. Having said all that, you know, I do know that, you know, sometimes a piece of paper is what you need, what you need to, you know, to hold up in front of somebody and say, "See, this has been here." So based on that, I, you know, I'm leaning toward accepting this, you know, as a, as something tangible that we can hold on to, to get to those next steps. So that's, that's my feeling. It's not, it's not the normal way that, normally, I wouldn't be in favor of, you know, of signing a piece of paper. I'd be more in favor of having a meeting with someone, you know, and actually trying to, trying to get something done. But having said that, maybe it's the catalyst, you know, so. Go ahead.
All right. So I just have a couple comments in regards to this, and I think part of it is, by setting the date, it maybe allows, if it's Pam, if it's one of us, if it's a group, to say, "Hey, let's go out there and see what we can do so that the town doesn't have to spend money." Or maybe this is just a little extra motivation so that by 2023, we're not spending tax dollars.
Okay.
So that would be my one comment with that. And then my second comment would be.
And then my second comment would be, do we want the date to be more aligned with the budget cycle rather than in the middle of a budget cycle when we maybe, come May, did not budget for this? So, saying that it might be in May or June of 2023, do we want that to align so that when we're having our budget discussions, that we can, we, the next council, whoever it may be, can plan accordingly for that instead of being in the middle? And I just had another comment. I think sometimes, and this is not to point any fingers, but since coming on to the second term of my council here, there has been some mentions that we don't want, and I'm not pointing fingers, I'm not blaming you, Larry, because you just mentioned it, but to have major projects during an election, election cycle, to me, is just, I think, a, I'll use just a poor choice of words. I don't care, this is my election cycle, my, my, this would be my third term. I don't really care if, I, I would think my past experiences would get me into office the following year if I decided to rerun rather than saying, hey, I think it's time to get Center Streets through. So, I didn't mean to point fingers, it was just another comment, because I have heard it before, that, oh, there's a major project, that's my election cycle. Can we kind of push it off to the following year? I've heard it a couple too many times now, and I think it's a, it's a sad and, and poor excuse, especially when we have taxpayers that are voting us up here to make these tough decisions. So, my other comment would be, do we want to do this in the middle, I mean, in the middle of a budget cycle or at the end slash beginning? I would say, push it to 20, May 2023 rather than January.
It does make sense.
Did you want to-
Trying to get at what the thing of June.
Gotcha.
It was the budget.
Okay.
You, you said it more eloquently.
Do we want May or June?
I, I'd say May, because that's when the budget gets-
Sorry.
Budget ends June 30.
Okay. So, June, June 2023?
Amend it.
Amend it? I'll make a, I'll make a motion to amend Resolution 2019-10 to reflect a new date of June 2023 rather than January 1, 2023. Discussion.
Seconded motion.
Is there a second?
I seconded.
Okay. And now, discussion on the amendment.
Just one quick point. Totally agree with Patty. People ask why we've been waiting 10 years, because we didn't want to put the million-something-dollar price tag on the back of the taxpayers, and that's why we've been waiting. But it's been going on for quite a long time now. It's actually holding up other projects, and I like that this doesn't firmly commit us to doing something, but it actually lays out a plan. It gives us a plan that we've never had before, and for that reason, it sounds like the council in that way, so.
All right, so, we're voting on the amendment at this point, if there's no more conversation. Okay, all in favor of the amendment to June, what'd we say, June 30th, 2023, or June 2023?
June 30th, 2023.
2023, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, all right. Councilmember Washaba opposes. Okay, but the amendment is passed, and now we're back to the, to the motion. Is there any more discussion on that? Pam, did you have anything to add? Okay, all right. All I would comment is, I wasn't quite following what the discussion was going on, on the election cycle. But I, but June 2023 seems, seems reasonable to me, and I think the wording is okay, because basically, it, it encourages us to keep going through the normal process. And if it, you know, if, if we reach that date, you know, then it kind of triggers at least our ability to stand up and say, hey, listen, we told you back in January 2020, we were going to do this, so. Okay. So, if there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
All right. Councilmember Washaba opposed, and all else in favor. Okay, moving on. All right, got ordinance 2019-12, that's a APOFO open space. This is for reintroduction and scheduling a public hearing. I will move to reintroduce. We need a second on that.
I'll say it.
Okay. Councilmember Purrier, seconds? Okay, and now we need to set a hearing, which I would think would be before the next council meeting. Just realized we're gonna have, we're moving on to three different public hearings that would be before that council meeting. So, I believe that's February 3rd. Yeah, okay. And so, if everyone is okay with doing that at 7:00 PM on February 3rd, that will be when the public hearing is. Anybody okay with that? Okay. All right, next, we have 2019-13. That's a downtown zone regulation on apartments. This is for reintroduction and to schedule a public hearing as well. Would someone like to reintroduce that?
I reintroduce ordinance 2019-13 for public hearing.
Okay, and we need a second on that.
I'll say it.
Okay. Councilmember Purrier, seconds? And we will, if everybody's okay, we'll schedule that one for 7:15 and see how that one goes. All right, next is 2019-15, amendments to the Ethics Chapter 13 for adoption. Okay, and I will move to approve. Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay, Councilmember Reed has seconded, and for discussion, I had sent an email to Dick. Are you willing to talk a little bit about this and tell us how this came about?
Chair of the Ethics Commission, this came about from the legislative session in Annapolis in 2017. There were some minor changes to the law, sent over to the State Ethics Commission. They sent out a memorandum stating that we municipalities should change their ethic laws and added a few suggested changes. Most of the required changes deal with lobbying, they're in here, but I'm not going to go over those. We don't have any lobbyists, so I, I don't think they're really that relevant or germane. There is one in there that actually, former Town Councilmember King was very, very much in favor of, that the state adopted, and says that we should redact home addresses from people's ethic statements. And so, we will do that. We need to think about whether we need to have some way of making sure that gets done, that should somebody come in and ask to review an ethic statement. And that would apply to the elected officials. The, I guess I, suggested changes, which are based on changes that were made at the state level but not required by law and municipalities, and most of those are not that significant. I would say, the one in there that is, would be of interest to you, is that there is an addition that specifically addresses the elected officials or others, staff assisting or using staff to assist in either the campaign for reelection of a elected official or the campaign of somebody seeking office. You are prohibited from using government resources specifically. That one applies to elected officials, let's see, home addresses, and I'm gonna say, most of the rest are pretty much perfunctory.
Okay.
Any questions?
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate, I mean, I won't ask any questions. I, I think it's good that we redacted the addresses. I think that's a good part of it. The rest of it is, you know, there. Just more restrictions on those who, who run. So, all right, thank you. Is there any more comment? Yeah, go ahead, Carl.
Yeah, I would just like to propose one little wording change or addition to this ordinance on page 2 of 5, G3D. Could we use put or title, it's like on, after public resources? Use public resources or title to solicit a political contribution or promote a candidate for public office?
That did come up, I think we did discuss that. The, the only issue that I brought up is, is it happens all the time that people say, you know, councilperson so-and-so running for reelection, they post it on their signs, they do it all the time. And, you know, is that the use of title to promote a candidate for public office?
Like their own candidate. I was thinking more of using of them helping a candidate, using their title, helping a candidate or other candidates to obtain elected office.
But then what about endorsements?
Yeah, I know.
If that does happen, then, you know, can somebody not endorse?
Yeah.
I guess they could as individuals, but-
Oh, they could still endorse, but just not use their title as like, you know, such-and-such position, use their personal name, because if it's a local election, most people know who, who they are and what position they have anyway.
I, I just-
That's the only-
I, I just comment that actually, the state did include in the wording, title. It was decided not to put that in there, partly for Second Amendment concerns of freedom of speech. The other thing is that if you endorse somebody and just say, Carl Munder, I endorse somebody, or Carl Munder, councilmember endorse somebody, you're doing the same thing, but yet, if you put the word title in there, then you're saying, well, in one case, it's okay, in another case, it's a violation of the ethics law, and it gets a little murky. So, for the sake of, of, you know, not getting into that murky area, we elected to take the word title out.
Okay. Because I know the state kind of looked at it when I ran, I checked with them. It's like, if you write it down, you can't, but if you speak, you can use a title. But I just would more be concerned with written endorsements more so than speaking endorsements, or someone saying, I'm, you know, councilman, I support this person or that. Speaking's fine, it's written, that is the problem.
I understand that, but I, I say, and that was one of the recommended, not required, and, you know, that's a-
Okay, I'm just-
Just it happened, and we may not want to go down.
Okay, that's fine. I just thought I wouldn't add that.
Or not add it.
Or not add it, exactly. Bring the suggestion forward.
Yeah, go ahead, Pat.
I just wanted to say, I, I've reviewed this, and I've also reviewed it with other municipalities that have had concerns with some of the ethics issues, and I think it's fine. Good job.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, that's unanimous. All right, next is 2020-1, MXD, MXD zoning, and that's for introduction. Would someone like to introduce that?
I'll introduce 2021.
Councilmember Purrier introduces, is there a second? We'll go with Councilmember Washaba. Seconded, and we will see that next month.
Actually, it's got to be referred to the Planning Commission.
Okay, all right.
How many days again?
60 days under the ordinance.
Okay. All right, so it'll go to the Planning Commission, we'll see that eventually. Next is ordinance 2020-2. That's a proposed text amendment restaurant for the industrial zone. It's for introduction as well and referral to the Planning Commission. Carl will move to introduce.
Yes, I move to introduce ordinance 2020-2 for referral to the Planning Commission.
All right, is there a second on that?
I'll say it.
Councilmember Purrier, seconds? And that's heading to PC as well, so. Okay, next is Resolution 20-20, 2020-1, to transfer town-owned property for introduction and to schedule a public hearing. Now, does that not need to go to planning?
It does not.
Okay, all right. So, on that one, I'll let someone else introduce it if somebody wants to.
I'll, I'll introduce Resolution, Resolution number 2020, excuse me, 2020-1.
Okay. Dan, is there a second on that?
Sorry.
Okay. All right, Dan, we'll be scheduling a public hearing on that one. I don't think we can just blow past that one without saying something about it, since it's, it's in the packets, it's not a secret anymore.
Yeah.
True?
True.
All right, so, we might be getting a Chick-fil-A, how about that? Okay, it's, it's where the Pizza Hut currently stands, so Chick-fil-A is interested in that piece of property, and in order to make that happen, they need to cut into a little bit of the green space that we have as a town. I shouldn't say green space, a little bit of the town's property along the edge of the current parking lot. So, that's what we're, we're setting up for, is to, is to improve the parking capacity of that property, and so that we can see what they have to offer in terms of getting a Chick-fil-A in town. So, so that's pretty big news for all of us, I believe, especially if you have children who like that chicken nuggets.
They always ask for it at the fourth grade, if I were mayor contest, they say, bring me Chick-fil-A. Of course, I have nothing to do with it. But you can, so I hope you approve it.
The staff has been working hard, so, and they've done a, done a really good job with it, so. So, the public hearing, we can set that one for 7:30 if you're okay with that. That gives 15, 15, 15, and that would mean the council meeting would start somewhere around the 7:45 range. Is everybody okay with that for the February council meeting? Starting a little bit late? Okay. All right, and, and that's it on that one. So, that's our big news of the night. Okay, next, we have the Voslo property rezoning application, and we need to reschedule that for a February date. And so, if everybody can whip out their calendars, and I'll just tell you, in February, it's a lot easier for, for me to do a Wednesday, either Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday. Wednesdays are preferred for me, so. How's everyone else look?
I'm best on the 19th.
19th?
This is for February, correct?
February.
I'm, I'm fine, yeah, whenever. 19th is fine.
You're good, you're good?
Yep.
Good, good. Okay, so, looking at the 19th, 7:00 PM, okay? Okay. All right.
And it would be hearing 10:00?
Yes. Seven? Everyone a chance to get that entered into their phones? All right. I don't see any new business, haven't heard about any new business, so we're moving past that, and we're down to mayor and council reports. And we'll start with the mayor.
Well, Happy New Year to everybody. It's been a fantastic year. I want to thank everybody for making it a great year, and on behalf of the council, we look forward to even greater things to come as we work together, so appreciate you very much. As the winter weather is, should be here, it's taking its time, please remember, you need to clear your sidewalks within 24 hours, but more importantly, please lend a helping hand to get out there and clear the bus stops and the fire hydrants for our first responders so they can locate them. We do have those markers on the hydrants, but it still helps out if there is a fire, and it could be saving your home or your neighbors to have those hydrants already dug out. So, if you could help with that, we very much appreciate it. So if you could help with that, we very much appreciate it. The If I Were Mayor contest is coming up. It has to be completed by March. Thank you, Gina, and we're getting ready to set on that. Carl Munder will be joining me this year, and if anybody else has an interest, please let me know. We go around to elementary schools and we talk about topics. I forget what this year's topic, what was it? You forget as well. Well, we'll be announcing that very shortly. And that's going to conclude my report. There'll be a formal written report filed tomorrow. Thank you.
All right, beautification, parks and rec, Councilmember Munder.
All right, I have, for once, I have nothing to report on that. There was no meeting for beautification in the month of December, and the Parks and Rec meeting was held on December 5th, but unfortunately, I was unable to attend to, to a previously scheduled family engagement, so I'm looking forward to the meetings in Feb, in this month.
Okay.
Beautification, the third Tuesday at 7:00 PM in Town Hall, and Parks and Rec, the third Thursday of every month, same location, Town Hall at 7:00 PM also. That's it?
That it? Okay. Economic Development Planning Commission, Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, so same situation. The Planning Commission as well as Economic Development Commission were canceled in December. There is a meeting tomorrow for economic development to review our draft grant, which we're calling Building a Better Future. That is in lieu of the Mom and Pop Grant that was, I think, introduced a couple of years ago. Our next meetings are, so the Planning Commission meets Monday, January 27th at 7:00 PM. EDC will meet Tuesday, January 7th at 7:00 PM. The Junior Task Force meets Monday, January 20th at 5:00 PM. And then a little bit of MAMSA news. I, I did announce my resignation as president of MAMSA. My decision for that was simply time management. I need to focus more at the town level, so this kind of frees up some of my time. Kelly Patrick is the new president of MAMSA. She will complete my term through June, and then MAMSA will hold a new election at that point. The next meeting is January 20th, 7:00 PM at Town Hall, and that's it.
All right, thank you. Sanitation and recycling, Mount Airy Sustainable Commission, Councilmember Purrier.
Thank you. So I was not able to attend the Sustainable Commission meeting that we had in December, and we will have recycling and sanitation on January 15th at 7:00 PM. The big news is this Saturday is the yard waste and Christmas tree recycle day. You don't need to do anything special with your Christmas tree, just throw it out there, and the guys will take care of it and throw it in the truck. That is the last yard waste day until April, though, however, so take a look around your yard while the weather is nice, throw it in a recycle bag, and put it out by the street.
I grabbed his attention, I'm sorry.
Sure did.
No, that's okay. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Jason. Streets and Roads Commission, Councilmember Washaba.
I don't have a report. Tomorrow is going to be another meeting. It will begin at 7:00, and I think it will be very well attended. I welcome anybody who would like to attend. And that's it. I conclude my report.
All right, thank you. Okay, Water and Sewer Commission and Special Projects, that's myself. Water Commission, there was no meeting in December. The water is still flowing, the toilets are still flushing, so all is well. Next meeting is February 5th at 7:00 PM at Town Hall. Historical Society news, there's a bingo on February 22nd. The doors will open at 5:30. It's at the MAVSC Reception Hall, Carnival Grounds. Food will be available, and we want everyone to know that this is a family-friendly event, so if you have kids and you want to come, you can certainly come on out there and make a night of it. The early bird game starts at 6:30 PM. We want to say thank you to all the sponsors. We see you out there, Mike. Thanks. So I appreciate everyone contributing to that. If you want to get tickets for that, you can go to the website, mountairyhistoricalsociety.org, or you may call the museum at 301-703-1427, and you can make a reservation as well. You can look at the Facebook page for the Historical Society, and you'd be able to get to a link that'll take you to the webpage on that. There is a raffle underway for two round trip tickets, domestic flight, not including Hawaii, on Southwest Airlines. These are $10 apiece for the raffle ticket. If you win, then you get two round trip tickets on Southwest Airlines. And all the proceeds for that are going through the Historical Society and into a, a gate that will be added onto the back of the caboose, as well as a, a gangway that will allow people to enter through the front of the caboose and exit out the back of the caboose.
Already, you already had it in the works, huh?
Told you.
I sent him an email two days ago. Somebody else had suggested.
Wouldn't that be a great idea?
Mr. Block.
They're already building it.
That is fantastic.
It's, it's coming along. So Wally's Iron Works is doing the work on that. They're the ones who did the entire signal for us, so, so they did a great job. So it's, it's good to be having Wally's involved in it, and, and that's what the raffle money's going to. Only selling 300 tickets, so you have a 1 in 300 chance, okay? And if we go over 200 tickets, then we'll probably buy a gift card, too, so you may have two chances.
Where are they available? Are they available?
They are available here at Town Hall, at the Blossom and Basket Boutique, where you can buy them at the museum on Saturday and Sunday, noon to four, which is the museum hours, Saturday and Sunday.
Can you buy them at the Bingo, too?
You can also buy them at the Bingo. If we have any left over when we get to the Bingo, then we'll be selling them there as well, and we'll have the drawing that night at the Bingo for the raffle.
They're usually sold out, though, just FYI.
Woo! Okay, and museums remaining open through the winter months, again, noon to four, Saturdays and Sundays. You should go out there because they have a great gift shop, and as well as that, they have incredible displays featuring Mount Airy's incredible history. It's quite a museum, so if you haven't been there, make a point to swing by there and check everything out. That's my report. And now I'm going to circle back to you.
Yeah, I, I omitted something. Doc, you got a, you have a second? Members of the Growth Development Task Force are out in the audience, and I think January 8th is our next meeting, and we'll be finalizing the town survey. Want to thank the town council for your input, and we'll be going over the final draft of the survey. Doc, what, what date is that planned to go out? February, at the end of February? Yeah, if you could come to the podium, it'd be good for everybody to know.
We hope to get it to the printer by like January 20th, 21st, so we can get it, or have it done by January 20th or 21st, so it can go out, because the bulk mail can take, I think, five to 10 days for people to receive it. And we're requiring that people have it back to us by the 29th of February, so tallies can start to.
29th of February, wow.
So the sooner we get everyone's approval on that, sooner we can get it to the printer, yada, yada, yada.
Right. And just to remind everybody, the plan is to perform a town-wide comprehensive survey every 10 years, actually prior to a master plan. We have a lot of hot topics. The council's getting ready to prioritize a lot of issues we have happening in town. We have some pretty major issues happening in town. And this survey will help guide the, the town council and give voice to the citizens out there that may not normally be heard. The last survey had a 43% or 44% response rate, which is outstanding. We hope to beat that record and give even more voice to the community. So thank you, and please look for that survey. You'll see yard signs popping up, reminding you, we're going to make it very easy to return it. So thank you all for your work.
All right. All right, and we're down to the town administrator report. David?
Mine's brief, like most of yours, so. One is that we have a number of projects in the works in the mayor and council. If they have any questions on where we are status-wise, hopefully we've given that to you, but if you want to know anything else about that, please feel free to contact us, and we'll tell you where we are in that process. The, we did sign a memorandum of understanding with Carroll County to allow their administrators to enforce stormwater management code within the town. Their expertise will come in, and we just needed to formalize that. They, we always knew, but we had to put it on paper. The other issue is we have a grant that we're working on in-house for a public places, art in public places vision plan. And this is a 100% grant that will, the state's offering. We're going to go for it. It would allow us to work with the Mount Airy Arts Alliance to try to get a vision of where some arts in public places could go. So fingers crossed, wouldn't cost the town anything, but a little staff time, and we'd be able to work with them to maybe bring something forward in the not-too-distant future. We have a February 12th deadline, and the Mount Airy Arts Society is going to meet in January, maybe finalize it, submit it, and hope for the best.
Okay, all right, thanks. While you're up there, if you can pass on to Brian Johnson, I noticed today going past a train station, that they got the Mount Airy sign up on the west side of the train station. They cleaned up the lettering that was all falling down and everything, so kudos to Brian and the boys for, for finally getting that sign up.
I saw the lift out there. I didn't know how far they were, but hopefully we're all, all set.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
They were out there bright and early, about 8:00 taking, taking the lights, the lights down, so.
Yeah, well.
And they used a bucket truck instead of a front loader.
Yeah. Before, I just have one other thing to say before Tom gets. I just wanted to say if people have traveled out North Main Street and Route 27, State Highway has begun putting a full-service light up there finally, so hopefully within the next couple of months, there'll be a full-service light at North, North Main Street and Route 27. So we're looking forward to that.
All right, thank you. Down to the town attorneys' report. Tom?
Assisted in preparing the ordinances and resolutions for tonight's agenda. Did a little bit on the CSX matter, a couple of enforcement matters, a little bit on the Harrison-Lashier matter, reviewed the town social media policy drafted by town administrator, a little bit on the Riggler property matter, reviewed the MOU on the stormwater management with county that David prepared. Helped the Maryland, I'm sorry, Maryland, Mount Airy Police Department respond to a subpoena that was issued to them for some documents. Worked on a couple of PWAs that'll be on the agenda in February. And finally, on 2019-12, 2019-13, if folks can let me know what changes in red line they want to see to those, given the recommendations from planning, and there are a number of variations that those ordinances could take in different parts, so, so that I can be timely with my submission to Holly and Colleen. Folks could let me know as early as possible what red lines you all want to see. That's my report.
Okay, all right. Let's see, code enforcement report was distributed, and is there a need to go on to close meetings tonight?
Not for CSX or Riggler, there's nothing terribly new.
Okay, all right, so we're good?
I think so. There's something about a police.
Yeah, we weren't going to do the, were you going to do the police station? Are we ready for that, Dave? Because there was some other information. Police station location.
That's going to be February.
Oh, fantastic. Good, because there was some other information that we need to evaluate.
They have to look at.
Good, thank you.
And on the Riggler property, no need to, not tonight. Okay, so doesn't sound like there needs to be a closed meeting tonight, so is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
All right, Councilmember Purrier?
I'll second.
Councilmember, well, we'll go with Councilmember Washaba. I think she jumped up first, and we'll roll call it. Pam?
Aye.
Purrier says aye. Patty? Say aye.
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
All right, I am with that. Thank you. We'll move on to February.